Ready to go. Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, November 12th. Welcome to our school committee meeting. At this point, we're gonna, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna do a roll call attendance. Starting with Mia.
Here.
Charlie.
We don't have Charlie yet.
No? Okay, Tony? Tony's on mute.
Here, here.
And Amanda?
One, two, three.
Here.
Touching, one, two, three.
And do I have Charlie? I don't see him.
I don't think so.
Can we wait 30 seconds? We can go back. Well, I won't play the music now. Wait, let's wait just a few seconds and see if he jumps in. We can hear you, though, Link.
I don't think he can hear us telling him that we can hear him.
Okay.
I'm gonna text him, so he knows what's what.
Okay. I think we should get going, because it's after 6:30, and Charlie can join us when he gets here. All right, we start out always recognizing this as a live broadcast. Online stream is available through Westwood Media Center and also online. And this is in order to provide real-time public access to the activities of our school committee in accordance with the March 12th, 2020 Executive Order of Governor Baker. Okay, so actually, tonight, a little bit different, as we're going to go to executive session tonight. The reason that, well, I'm gonna need a motion to go into executive session, because we go there because we need to conduct strategy tonight with respect to collective bargaining, which would have a detrimental effect on our position as the school committee, if it's discussed in open session. So, without further ado, I think we need a motion to move to executive session. And once we're done there, we'll be back here at 7:00 PM for the public portion of this meeting. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion before we go to executive? Okay, seeing no discussion, all in favor, Mia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
And I don't think Charlie's here yet, right?
Right.
See him. Okay, all right. We will move to executive session, and we will be back in again, as I said, at 7:00 PM. Back now to our open public session, the school committee meeting, and we're gonna move now. I think I have to call back to order. So I will call this, this meeting back to order again. Today is Thursday, November 12th, 6:30, I'm sorry, it's 7:00 PM. And we're gonna get going, and again, recognizing this is a live broadcast. And this is to provide real-time public access to the activities of this school committee in accordance with the March 12th, 2020 Executive Order of Governor Baker. And without further ado, now, we're going to, well, I think I have to take attendance one more time. I'm sorry. Tony Mullen?
Here.
Amanda Phillips?
Here.
Mia Plotkin?
Here.
And Charlie Donahue.
I see him, but he's on mute. Well.
Charlie? I think, is it enough to say we see him? All right, we're gonna go on, and moving to the superintendent's report now. Starting with grade 2 and 3 transition.
Great, thanks. Good evening, everyone. So as you know, at our last meeting, we were talking about some of our concerns about how the hybrid model was working for, for our younger learners in grades 2 and 3. And I had told you that we were really assessing that situation and trying to figure out how best to approach it and, and put some action steps in place. So, you know, after much discussion and observation, we developed a plan to bring back our 2nd and 3rd graders to in-person instruction four days a week, using a model similar to what we have had in place for K and 1 since the beginning. And so we did that, and doing that has required that we use space differently. And frankly, that we re-prioritize how we're deploying our staff, our licensed staff. So, 2nd graders return to in-person learning, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, beginning this past Monday. And I have to say, I have unfortunately not been able to get out into the buildings to see it happening, but Allison I know has, and she has reported back about how it's going. In some cases, we were able to move classes to, to, well, what we had to do was move them to larger alternative spaces, to gyms, to cafeterias, to libraries. In other cases, our 2nd grade classes were flipped with our kindergarten classes, because our reopening model created smaller kindergartens, and because kindergarten classrooms just tend to have more square footage than other classrooms. In some cases, we were able to, to just flip the spaces. And in a very limited number of cases, for example, at Deerfield, which just happens to have very, very small class sizes, 12 and 13, I think, the classes were able to remain in their regular classrooms. We just removed some additional furniture. So I'm happy to say that that transition has taken place. I think it's gonna be great for the kids in 2nd grade. We do know that in January, our fully remote families have the opportunity to return students for in-person learning. And so we're keeping an eye on that, because that, of course, does change the number of kids in a given section. And, you know, we did try to look ahead and to make some predictions, but that could, could present some additional challenges. I really want to thank our operations department, who did an incredible, incredible job, because there were just a tremendous amount of logistics and moving things, and our technology department that had to make a lot of adjustments, so that we could prepare those larger alternative spaces to serve as classrooms. And, you know, they have been in on weekends, and I can't thank them enough. I'm frankly thrilled with how smoothly it went, so thanks to those folks. And so, also, this past Monday, we started our action steps for grade 3. So on Monday, we transitioned our 37 fully remote 3rd graders out of their current school-based classes and into 2 fully remote classes. And, you know, we knew that doing so was, was going to be hard, that it required kids changing teachers, and, and not just changing teachers, which actually does happen quite a bit over the course of a school year sometimes, and you go out on leave, but, you know, changing classmates. And so we did keep kids who were fully remote in a given school together, but now they are in classes with kids from other schools as well. But we really decided that those kids would be better served educationally in this fully remote model. We, we just heard universally from 3rd grade teachers across the district that they didn't feel like they were able to serve those kids well in the model that we had. And we thought that what we were doing in K to 2 was working pretty well. And we thought that it was important to, to make that change. So in order to staff those classes, we've reassigned 2 teachers who are content specialists to classroom teaching positions. So that is also off and running. And then the last step of this transition is that on this coming Monday, on the 16th, our hybrid 3rd graders will be transitioning to in-person instruction four days a week. And so we're doing this in different ways at different places. The, the number of students in the classes and the size of the spaces that were available varies from school to school. You know, we had to use some of those larger alternative spaces to a greater degree, to do the degree 2 transition in some places. So in 3rd grade, again, some very small classes can be accommodated in classrooms, but other classes are gonna have to move to larger alternative spaces like libraries. And then in other cases, where the larger spaces are no longer available, we will have each cohort of a given class in 2 different rooms. And students will retain their teacher, but we have assigned additional staff to that grade level. And the staff will be working basically as a grade-level team in order to provide direct instruction and small group support and supervision for, for independent practice. So that's gonna look a little bit different in different places, depending on the circumstances. But again, we think that this is really going to address some of the things that we are finding very challenging. So we're excited about that. I will tell you, you know, we'd had some conversation in the last couple school committee meetings about resources, and the committee had been very supportive of the idea of hiring additional staff in order to make this happen. And I will say that I wish we could have done that. The truth of the matter is that our attempts to hire additional staff just didn't yield quality candidates. And, you know, what we're finding is that the candidate pool has just been depleted as districts have hired more teachers and instructional assistants in order to adequately staff their, their fully remote cohorts and to function in the hybrid model. And so we aren't the only people who are experiencing this challenge. We are continuing our efforts higher, but in the meantime, we have deployed our remaining specialists, the 3rd grade teams, in order to make that in-person instruction possible. And I mean, I think it's good news for students, right? These folks have a high level of expertise, and I think that will be wonderful. But there is an impact, and in making that decision, which we decided was our priority, you know, it does reduce our ability to provide coaching to new teachers, and we have quite a number of them this year, and also to provide literacy and math intervention services to students at the same level that we, we typically have. So, you know, we've made a choice to prioritize tier 1 instruction, and I feel good about that choice. I think it's the right thing to do. But if we are able to figure out a way to hire additional staff, I think that still should be, still should be one of the goals. So we will continue to work on, on that. That is the update from grades 2 and 3. I don't know if there are any questions.
I'd just like to echo your thank you for the operations staff, including the custodians. They've been the real heroes of everything, I think, over the last few months. So I just wanna echo the thank you to that entire team.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a massive undertaking. And even though you covered it in about 5 minutes, the amount of time that went into that was, was quite something, so thank you.
Yeah, and I can tell you that my 3rd grader is so excited to start school with everyone on Monday. So I think it's gonna make a big difference for these kids. So, you know, heartfelt thank you for, to everyone for making this work.
Yeah, well, and I am appreciative of the staff, who have been very flexible. You know, people have gone from one role to, you know, being a literacy specialist, to being told now you're gonna be a fully remote grade 3 teacher. And, you know, people have, you know, they've, they've done that with, with good, good humor. So I appreciate that they've been, been willing to do that for us. Okay, so that's that. Next item in the superintendent's report is, we wanna provide you with our monthly update of COVID data. So let me just get my screen for that. I think Abby is going to take us through this. Oops. I'm having a little technical problem.
Okay. All right, so hi, everybody. What we've done for you this month is we've kept the data from our last meeting on October 8th, and then we're reporting the cumulative data as of today. This is from about 2:15 today. So in terms of students, the kids have been in since 9:14. And as of today, we have 320 students who have been supported by the COVID team and who have been absent from in-person instruction for some reason. That is up from our previous number that we reported to you of 133. And you should bear in mind, our total student population hovers right around 3,000 students. Of that, 271 of those kids have been cleared to return to in-person learning as of today. So that's really important. There's a tremendous amount of work and follow-up and communication that goes into the process of starting with a person who's not present and getting them all the way back. And so that's occurred for 271 of our students. And that leaves a remaining 49 students who are continuing to learn remotely due to being quarantined for a variety of reasons. It may be family travel, it may be being identified as a close contact, or it may be due to a particular illness. That number is up from our last report to you as well. So last time, we were telling you about 30 students, so today it's 49. And we have identified, we have 14 positive student cases as of today. And at our last report, we had a single student case. In terms of staff data, the picture's a little different. The staff have been in since August 31st, so they have 2 more weeks kind of on the docket, if you will. So we have 106 staff who have been supported by the COVID team and have been absent from in-person work at one point or another since we started on the 8/31. That's up from 59. Of those folks, 96 of those people have been cleared to return to in-person work. And again, I just can't stress enough the amount of manpower and time and case management it takes to get all of those folks fully back, and that's a wonderful result. And that does leave 10 staff people who, as of today, continue to be working remotely due to the same 3 factors. It's a mix of factors. And being a close contact or certainly being positive are the leading factors. As of today, we have 6 positive staff cases identified across all staff working groups.
Abby, what's the total number of staff?
Oh, that's a good question. It hovers around 578, 574, depending on who you ask. And it's hard to get exactly right, because people are coming and going.
But around 575.
Yep.
Okay.
And in terms of consult, the consultation piece is additional to that, because people are constantly calling with questions, worries, things they've heard, we're untangling rumors, things like that. And the, the COVID team have consulted with 221 parents and staff since 8/31, and that's up from 89 folks who had made contact with us last time we talked to you. And again, they're just, they're going through protocols, they're answering questions, they're sending documents, they're, you know, communicating with people, they're following up repeatedly with people and checking in, all of that kind of work. So those are some of the numbers. We just wanna, again, thank Karen, Matt, and Paula for their work. It's really come into, into fine relief this last month. The impact that their work has on keeping principals and school nurses focused on the, on the functioning of the whole school and allowing them to keep their energy on the educational mission of the school. And I just can't thank them enough for their work. Are there questions or anything in particular folks would like to know? If this, sure, I was just gonna say, if this type of data reporting is helpful, we can continue to go month to month and carry the previous month's data along, so that you see the, the trend data, if that's useful to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought I might also take this opportunity just to say a couple of words about the fact that we are fully remote at the high school this week. And, you know, how that decision was made and why. So, you know, as, as you know, as of Sunday, we'd experienced 5 positive cases of high school students in, in a week. And since that time, we've been notified of 3 additional high school students and 1 middle school student who have tested positive. And I should say that we are thinking of those students and obviously hope that they're feeling well, and will get well soon. You know, in my communication to the district, I stated that we believed that those cases were generally traceable to, to indoor gatherings without masks. And I think that that is, that is how I characterized it, just that folks were indoors without masks. And I just wanna clarify that my intention in saying that was in no way to cast dispersions or to, to appear judgmental, but rather, my intention was to provide enough context and information so that parents and students didn't have to speculate or become anxious or become worried. And, you know, what we have learned so far this fall is that when we put out information, we then get a whole bunch of questions back. And people are often just very worried. And they have said to us that if you can provide a little more context, then they can make good, reasonable decisions for themselves and maybe be spared, you know, a few days of, of just being kind of concerned and on the hook. So that was the purpose of providing that information. And really, you know, there does seem to be consensus among public health people that the risk of transmission is greater indoors and when not wearing a mask. And I didn't wanna give people the impression that something was happening here, like, in spite of measures like wearing masks. So, and so that was the situation. So I will say that we are very thankful that as of today, I believe, the town of Westwood has a public health nurse. And I think that's gonna be very important for the schools. And we really look forward to collaborating with that person. But this past weekend, while we were trying to put together timelines and understand what was happening and determine whether or not the district needed to pull class rosters and do contact tracing in school, you know, our COVID team ended up doing a lot of community-based contact tracing. And the volume of the tracing was too large for our small team to accomplish by the end of the weekend. And, you know, I will say that I think that at this point, you know, we have clarity that, as wonderful as our COVID team is, that we aren't, we don't have the infrastructure and resources to do that kind of community-based contact tracing through the school department. But during the contact tracing process, we were learning about new positive cases that hadn't yet made it into the state's reporting system for our local public health department. So in other words, we had information the public health officials didn't yet have to act on. So on Sunday, I consulted with our Westwood Public Health Director, our school physician, our COVID team nurse, and 3 residents who have volunteered to serve as medical advisors to the, to the district, including 2 MDs who work in Boston Hospitals and an epidemiologist. These are really wonderful people, and I appreciate their volunteering. And all of those individuals recommended that we go remote this week at the high school. It was unanimous. And I, I think they had a couple of concerns. I think that public health needed to continue the contact tracing, and they needed time to do that. There were also concerns that, given the lag time in the state's reporting system, that additional cases would emerge and that we perhaps didn't have the full picture yet. And that going remote for a week would put us sort of 2 weeks out, and that hopefully this cluster would be extinguished. And I should also mention that I consulted with the COVID response team at DESI and with an epidemiologist at the state DPH, and they were supportive of this decision. And so that is the decision that I made. I listened to the public health and medical folks, and I think that I do have a responsibility to rely on their expertise when making these kinds of decisions. I, I just also wanna acknowledge that I know that there are other districts that have chosen to go fully remote for a period of time because they have knowledge that students have gathered over the weekend, and they're just kind of concerned about possible impacts. And we actually have not taken that approach in Westwood at this point. You know, in this instance, we weren't not responding to information about a gathering. We were responding to information about positive cases and trying to understand what was happening. So I wanna say I've gotten a couple of emails from high school students who were frustrated and disappointed by the decision. And I get that, and I'm sorry that this is the circumstance. I think that some kids feel like somehow, maybe, they've expressed to me that they feel like my decision unfairly punished them in some way. And I've been trying to explain to them that the decision was in no way made to punish anyone, right? That that was not the framework for making this decision, that the decision wasn't about imposing consequences. It was about listening to the expertise of people around me and making a decision to keep people safe. So, you know, as is always the case throughout this pandemic, I hope I am making the right decisions, and who knows? But that, that is what we decided to do. And if there's a situation in the future, the specifics and the facts and the timelines of that case may be different. Who knows what the decision would be? But we'll keep trying to work through these things. That's where we are.
Any questions, thoughts?
So the, the additional cases we found this week with students, because they were remote, we didn't have to do the contact tracing in school. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, the 4 additional student cases, none of those students were in the building.
Okay. And in person, sorry, and in person resumes on Monday?
In person resumes on Monday.
Okay.
That is the plan. Yes. Anything else on this topic before we turn it over to Link for a budget update? Okay. All right, well, Lincoln, take it away. Well, we can't hear you. Here we go.
Perfect. I'll give you an update on COVID expenses since our last conversation. And with grade 2 and 3 moving back into class, we've had to purchase 110 units, desk units, and that's about $14,000. We've ordered large area air purifiers. For example, large areas would be defined as the gymnasium or a library. It's being used now for classrooms. That was $9,000 for 6 units. We've also ordered room dividers for about $3,000. We've had to install whiteboards. Our staff provided the labor. We had to purchase the materials, so it was a good cooperative effort. That was $5,000. So we're about $35,000 into material items over the past month. As far as PPEs go, we are currently, we currently have a 4-month stock in-house if things go as they have for the first 9 weeks of school. I would like to thank Pam Dukeman at the town. She has been incredible. I could see that the Selectment School Committee, Finance Committee, has worked hard over the years to establish positive relationships. Pam has been very forthcoming with CARES Act money that had been provided by the state. We will be north of $650,000 attributed to the schools, primarily in the areas of technology, so that has been phenomenal. She also helped out with the materials to reopen the 2nd and 3rd grades. So at this point, we're at a time where about $300,000 for federal FEMA money that has been committed, about $700,000 for the CARES Act that the schools have received, the state $225 per pupil direct grant is at $650,000 of the $675,000 available. And that, that accounts for all personnel that have been necessarily added through December 31st. So that may be one of the motivators for the governor and the commissioner to get everyone back to school, because it's expensive to stay out of school, too. And it's, and it, there are really no winners, the students or the teachers or the parents, and only COVID is the winner. And I'm afraid if we're out in this model past December 31st, we'll have to call on the state for additional assistance for the staffing. Lastly, that's about it. That's, that's the conclusion. So we're at about $1 million and a half COVID relief, COVID CARES money, federal FEMA money. And we're in good shape now with staffing, other than those positions, as we had alluded to. And we're in good shape with PPE. Availability is decent. Chromebooks are coming in, and have come in. Apparently, there's been a release of thousands of Chromebooks into our area. As I talk to colleagues, some districts have been waiting. My brother's a superintendent. He's been waiting since June for 2,000 Chromebooks, and now they're on the way. So that has eased up, so all in all, Westwood is in good shape.
So here's a question. Lincoln, how do you feel about the second half of the year? I mean, just from an operating perspective, it sounds like you feel comfortable.
Well, I'm comfortable to the extent that, that I know we can make it through December 31st. Beyond that, I know that the school committee and the administration has worked hard to set aside monies within the operating budget. By tightening our belts and we've been very conservative with the spending. So I think we'll be fine. I think we need to revisit there this every month. And I should give you an update and then subsequently I will give you an update. But we're tracking everything right down to the penny. We have spreadsheets that we share with the town. It's updated live. Technology can be, can be a wonderful thing sometimes. So when it works. So I, I think we'll be okay, but I would like to reserve judgment for keep you updated, keep you updated with the quarterly reports with the operating budget, keep an eye on the state. And and just have to be prudent with our spending.
Has there been any supply issues on the filters? Those easy to get?
They're, no, they, the supplies, the issue with the filters are the size of the filters and the different ages of our buildings. So they have various sizes. It's not like a home where you go in and it's a 20 by 20 or 18 by 22 or something like that. These are very large filters, some five feet wide by four feet tall. Some of these huge air handling units. So Ken, the director of operations has been excellent working with the maintenance staff to actually splice together air filters to fit our units, the ones that we can't get that aren't available per se. So all the filters are installed and it was yeoman effort to do that because they all had to be, as I said, cut, splice together and made airtight.
Thank you.
So we, we think Tony that the filters, the correct size, you know, filters that would be easier to install that we ordered way back when for the start of school. We're hoping that they will be in, in time to replace, you know, the ones that we did. We replaced them quarterly. We'll see. Okay. Any other questions for Link? Okay. Thank you, Link. So I'm just going to turn over quickly to Allison. To give an update about where we are with SCL because I know that's something that the committee has been interested in following.
Yes. And thank you all. Um, I, I just want to hit some sort of high level stuff this evening about kind of what we've been doing to try and keep the effort alive and moving forward. You know, as you know, kind of expanding our efforts around social emotional learning has been a strategic priority for the past couple of years. And I think the pandemic has made, has done this interesting thing where it's made that both sort of more urgent. People really feel a sense of wanting to make sure we're, we're focusing on this in part because of the disruption of the pandemic to how we normally do school. Uh, it also actually makes it kind of harder ironically because we don't have the students around as much and they aren't interacting with each other as much. So it presents some interesting challenges. But I want to say our SEL coordinator has kind of kicked things into high gear over the last couple of months and has a few important initiatives in the works. So broadly at the elementary school and middle school and high school, things look a little bit different. At elementary, we've really been focused on thinking about how to embed SEL into daily class routines instead of an add-on curriculum. The elementary school already has a circle, which is a social competency curriculum. Um, and it's kind of a, a place where we have so much to do and we wanted to, instead of adding more to do, to kind of capitalize on opportunities to sort of teach in the moment skills and have routines and structures that give us opportunities to, that are more organic around SEL. So we, as you know, elected to go with responsive classroom training for our elementary faculty as a step toward doing this. We got our first cohort of teachers trained last year, just kind of under the wire, right before we closed for the spring. Uh, we had a second cohort, cohort ready to go that unfortunately had to be canceled. That was scheduled for the summer. So right now we're in the process of kind of regrouping, getting some more training sort of lined up for either February or April of this coming year. The training is actually best done over vacations because it's day long training and it's four days in a row. And having staff out of school during that time can be really disruptive, especially now when we, we're really, we want to keep people in front of kids as much as possible. And they want to be there as much as possible. Um, so we're kind of looking at a couple of ways to do that. Either in February or April, or if we can't kind of get a cohort together around those vacation weeks, another option is to send smaller groups of teachers out to other trainings. So that's all sort of getting worked through right now. Additionally, the folks who already did the initial round of training are going to have opportunities to take some additional kind of courses and kind of expand their tools in terms of some of the classroom strategies they can use. And finally, um, I think I mentioned this last time, we got a wonderful grant from the Foundation for Western Education. And we were able to put some resources that are created by responsive classroom into the hands of all teachers at the elementary level for you. So teachers who are trained, but also teachers who are kind of new to that. So they, they could start to explore those resources even before we get to the training. And additionally, Aaron has been going out to start to kind of get into some elementary classrooms. See teachers, support them and, and as they think about, how do I do some of this SEL stuff, particularly given some of the constraints of social distancing and, and things like that. So that's kind of a snapshot at elementary. So our, I'll pause for just a second. The elementary specific questions and I'll give you a quick overview of the middle school. Okay. At the middle school level, we have kind of more of a focus on curriculum and trying to find curriculum that can provide teachers with some consistent instruction. So again, uh, thanks to the foundation, we got some grant funding to invest in second step, which is a curriculum we've already sort of dabbled with through both our guidance and our health teacher. Those folks have accessed second step for years around some of their bullying prevention work. But it has very robust online resources as well as some print, print materials that can be used. And right now the middle school team, uh, the admin team along with Aaron and the, one of the people who's been working on the advisory are looking at how do we kind of carve out some really dedicated time to do this? And they're looking at a couple of different options above and beyond the health class in the sixth grade. And I, I think we'll be looking to, to sort of carve out time this year and also begin to think about how do we implement more fully next year, when hopefully we're back in more of a routine schedule. We also just submitted a grant, which is exciting around doing some SEL through service learning at the eighth grade level, which is exciting. It's kind of one of these cool ideas where you know, there's a grant funding available and the eighth grade also has a civics, civic education requirement. And we saw this could be an opportunity to sort of bring a bunch of things together. So kids in their civics project, there could be a way for them to do some service learning and also work on SEL skills at the same time. So that is underway as well at the middle school. Let me see if I missed anything here. Um, oh, I wanted to mention, uh, go ahead.
I just, uh, wanted to ask you, what are some of the things that are taught in this period? What are the, you know, issues brought up? And what is the response to the teachers been at the end of the process? Have they found it helpful? Are they supportive of what they've been able to learn?
In terms of the middle school specifically?
Just the whole, the whole list of the trainings that the, the elementary all the way through. What are, what are some of the issues that are taken up? Maybe at the, the earlier years?
Yeah, I, I think with earlier kids, it's often things like understanding emotion, like understanding your own feelings and how they impact you in the school day. So helping kids learn to identify, kind of acknowledge and then figure out how to manage their feelings when they're kind of coming into a class setting. So if I know, for example, that I am, you know, coming in and I'm excited, but I'm also like kind of all over the place in terms of my, my energy level. And I can learn to, to sort of identify that and then use strategies to get myself more focused and ready for a quieter learning experience. So, so it has a sort of individual benefit. So it's some individual things like that in terms of self-knowledge and kind of self-control. Also there's, there's a social component, helping kids learn to think about kind of other people's perspectives, their responses to a situation, why they may kind of look at something differently than how I look at it. And those kinds of things are really critical to helping kids work through group projects or negotiate turns on the playground and things like that. So.
What, what is the feedback from the teachers been who have been through the training? Is it teaches them a lot of new things they've never seen before? It makes it more helpful?
Yeah, I, I think it's interesting. I've seen people actually using some of the strategies in class as I've gone around. There's one teacher I'm thinking of in particular. And you can, you can definitely notice a difference in terms of the way the class runs and kind of how kids are responding to situations. And the teachers who have done that four day training are very, very positive, overwhelmingly positive about kind of the tools that it gives them for, for the class. It's essentially, it's interesting. It both helps individual students, but also it kind of creates a really positive classroom culture.
So just to, just to piggyback on Charlie's question. So this, um, training, I would guess like everything else has a COVID element to it. So I, I would think that there, is there an element that helps kids? I mean, we're hearing that some kids are struggling with, you know, we call it many things, isolation or with the fact that they have to work more on their own, less group learning possibly, and the difficulties of group learning, perhaps when you're separated in your own homes. I'm guessing that the curriculum get, must delve into some of that as well, or is it more of a general curriculum and this is addressed elsewhere?
It's, it's a great question. I mean, one of the nice things, and I don't know this material as well. I do know that Aaron has pushed out for staff some very specific pandemic related SEL sort of resources that, I mean, responsive classroom is a huge organization. They've been around for a while. So they're really good at kind of being responsive to the circumstance. And I, I think they've done a nice job. If you look on their website, they have things that are, there are free resources that are available to everybody around kind of, you know, helping support students and helping them kind of manage kind of these, how do you continue to develop these competencies at times when you're just, just plain not interacting as much with people, you know? I do want to say, you know, this kind of sort of I think of mental health as sort of in a somewhat separate bucket, but there is a connection in that sort of the skills that you learn in SEL land are the things that kids can, can use to kind of maintain positive mental health for themselves. And so, um, and I think that is a real worry that we hear from families and, and teachers just, you know, concerned about what toll this is, this takes on kids and, and that actually connects with them. We are going to continue to do the SOS curriculum, which is the signs of suicide curriculum at the middle and high school levels, just to make sure we're kind of, we've got a finger on the pulse. Um, and another thing that, that is new this year SOS, we've been doing for a number of years and we find that very useful. But we just invested in Panorama, which is a student survey tool that really looks, it, it's sort of a survey battery for kids that gets information about their confidence in their own SEL strategies. How are you about these kinds of skills? You know, how do you feel about this kind of situation or this kind of situation? It's been used a lot. It seems to be very, uh, kind of reputable. And I think, you know, I think Tony had asked earlier about data and data collection. And this would really set us up to get some data around what is going on with kids and specifically where are the areas that they are telling us they are less confident, they need more help, they need more support. So we're excited about that. And that actually is something we can use across all levels. Additionally, I want to mention, uh, you know, I, I focused kind of my memo to the superintendent, which is included in the packet on K to eight because that's kind of where the SEL coordinator lives. But there are some interesting things afoot at the high school as well. Are, we have a high school educator who's kind of taking on a leadership role, working with a group of educators around exploring some curriculum options that can be used with high school students during some of the homeroom time as a way to sort of tackle kind of things that are more high school appropriate and age, age appropriate. But we want to be really mindful, you know, for older kids. This is, they're at a time of life when they, all they want is just to be around each other and this, this pandemic, I think, impacts them across all, all aspects of their lives. And so we're really thinking hard about, you know, what do we do proactively? You know, not just, not just to react if there's a problem, but what can we do proactively to sort of provide them with some skills and strategies that they can use? So I just got that update from Amy yesterday.
Thank you.
Um, another area where I think, and I don't know if this is, I think it's SEL, it's not your typical, you know, but I think one thing that has emerged from the, from COVID is that the level of distraction has gone, has increased. And, uh, and you're seeing kids, you know, particularly in the remote environment who are distracted much more easily and probably in greater numbers than if everyone were in the classroom. And I'm wondering if there's anything we can do to combat that. And maybe it's, that's combined with the technology piece. I don't know, but you know, you, you'll, yeah, I'm hearing this. I, I see it in my own house, but I'm also hearing it from other parents that, you know, kids will be in a class and have a browser open and, and checking something on the browser or, you know, I think there's, it's, it's much harder. We've said it's much harder to pay attention in class. But there have, you know, if there's any thought about tools that can help these kids with distraction and redirection if it needs be or, because I think that's becoming a big problem. Particularly in, in the older, you know, where the kids are more independent in high school and in the middle school. They're much more independent and they're much, they're supposed to be more independent. They're supposed to work more independently. And, um, I'm just, I think it's a, I think it's starting to be a problem.
Yeah. No, I, I think that's a great point. Um, you know, it's, it's not just the kids, I will say, the adults, I think, all of us who are spending a lot more time, you know, interfacing through, through this. It, it's not easy. Um, and there's kind of science behind what makes it so hard to stay focused on via technology. And so I, I, I agree. And that's something that can kind of move back and talk with the high school team about. In particular, middle and high school, just thinking about, can we arm kids with some strategies or tools that would help them first understand what it is that it's not like a character flaw or, or anything like that. It's just, there's parts of the way we're wired that really aren't meant to be doing business this way, right? And, and then how do you kind of compensate for that as best you can?
Allison, are we going to have the money from the Westwood, the foundation, Westwood Education? The money, more money from them again?
They, I mean, they gave us very generously, uh, funding for this and for NearPod. And, you know, I think they have indicated, they've kind of left the door open for asking, you know, I think there's, they've been such a generous partner. If there's, you know, something that the community needs, it's about education. They've always been there. So.
Well, they've extended their deadline. And the other thing possibly Emily, at a future meeting, the, uh, there's new civics requirement for eighth graders. Do you think we could discuss that? I think that's a new issue and how that's going and what's, how that's being organized. That'd be something you could brief us on. It'd be nice to learn about it.
Yeah, we can certainly put that on a future agenda. It's a new state requirement this year.
Amanda, did you have something?
I did. Thank you. Um, just a question related to SEL as a, and COVID. Whether anything's happening regarding understanding different perspectives, specifically, you know, steps that are being taken to make sure that kids or students who have COVID or close contacts aren't being judged. And on the flip side, having, you know, students who are quarantined, maybe high need students or those with high risk family members who kind of have a lot to lose by being out of school if their perspective is understood. Wondering if that's being addressed or if that's an opportunity.
That's a, it's a, a great point. And, um, you know, I know our, our faculty do a nice job in terms of just making sure we are modeling what it means to be sort of kind and, and supportive of our students and, um, but I think, uh, you raise a nice point about, we might need to be very explicit in terms of how we talk about how to treat people. And I think that's, that's something we can work on. Thanks.
Just one, I know we're going to have to run the other top, but just one comment. And I asked at the, the mass meeting in, I suppose October. It's just around, I get the concept of time and you mentioned like we, we are limited on time, particularly we kind of blocked out.
We kind of blocked out the middle school. I'd really like to encourage you and Mike to think about how do we, how do we address that in small ways in the second half of the year? This is just one honest, one, one man, humble man's opinion. But I'm, I was concerned whether or not we get to chapter 16 or 17. If we don't get to 17, that might be okay. If we carve out a little time to make sure we're addressing some of the things you've talked about, you know, in the context, I know we don't, we've lost a block. That I would think that might be well worth thinking about.
Yeah, I, I actually know they, they kind of have a plan in the works for that, Tony. It was to kind of work through the help, that kind of help class in sixth grade. And then, you know, the, the rotation in seventh and eighth grade. Those classes, which are very long, right? They're, you know, like 90 minutes. Being able to carve out time in that arts rotation to have instruction in these areas. Often the arts are places that kind of lend themselves to talking about some of the SEL because they're, for a lot of kids, it's through either arts or phys ed or those kinds of areas where they, they actually really draw upon that skillset and have to use it. So, so it's a kind of nice natural fit. So I, I think they, they've cooked up a really nice way to come at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great Alison, if you want to keep rolling into the last topic here about assessment, that'd be great.
So this is the, the first part of this is that I'm going to ask you to don't shoot the messenger because I need to talk about MCAS. And to let you know that the state has indicated they are plowing ahead with MCAS testing this year, that they anticipate a regular spring schedule. So that we, we don't know what the timeline is for that yet. They haven't released it yet. But, but everyone grades three through eight as normal would be taking MCAS in the spring. Additionally, and in other groups that kind of typically we do testing around, there's an MCAS alt portfolio process that looks similar to the past. And our access testing for our English language learners also is kind of on a similar timeline to, to the past. A new wrinkle is that the students who are currently juniors or seniors. So I'll talk about juniors first. Our juniors didn't take the MCAS last year and therefore have not taken the high school exam and haven't yet met the competency determination as indicated by the state. So if you recall, the state requires that kids get a passing score on the MCAS or that they achieve a score at a certain threshold and meet some other requirements in order to graduate from high school. So they have given us two windows for testing juniors, one in January, one in May. And the high school team is really looking hard at how to do that testing as best they can without disrupting school for either the juniors or everybody else in the process. Because it is required to be live and in person. And it also, it's like five different sessions of testing. So I talked with Amy about this yesterday, and I think they've got some good ideas for making that logistically viable. And they'll be kind of rolling that out soon. For the seniors, it's a little bit different scenario. The senior testing is just if there are any seniors who haven't yet made it over that competency determination, there are some opportunities for them to take the test to make sure that they get that before graduating. Additionally, I'd note that the juniors testing window is designed to give juniors an opportunity to qualify for the Adams scholarships. So there's a, I guess there's a silver lining in, in there somewhere. But, so that's a little bit about MCAS, more to come in the weeks ahead. We'll get details from the school side. Kind of more broadly about assessment, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. We've done some assessments at the elementary level. We usually have a battery of literacy and math tests that we use primarily to just check in on students, but also to kind of identify if we see kids that were concerned who need intervention. And I, I have what I think is some good news. We really weren't sure exactly what we were going to see with our literacy assessments. And particularly given the closure in the spring. And the way they are shaking out in the early grades, which is where we have the data and are starting to put our attention first, is that the numbers of students who are sort of at the threshold where we think they are going to need intervention does not look radically different from what it has in the past, which is great, which is great. So we have, we've already kind of been through first and second grade. And that's where we're going to start doing our literacy intervention program. So that will begin very soon. There's a letter ready to go out to parents. And then in math, people are taking a slightly different approach. Our, our math team has worked with teachers to actually use the unit based assessments at each unit so that if there are skills that the kids are lacking, they can actually do some in-class sort of intervention work right there and then. So it's a little different model we're, we're trying out, but it's something that the math teachers, math specialists have been trying to sort of promote for a number of years now because they've seen it be very effective. So that's a little bit at the elementary level. Some nice news at the middle school, the middle school has actually had some real success using a more formal assessment tool called STAR 360 for literacy. They are going to actually add in a math component as well. And again, K to eight, this is folks really looking at, are we seeing kind of places where there are some skill gaps that we want to address? You know, we're mindful of the fact people are concerned, you know, about the closure last spring, the move to all remote learning, the, all the just change and transition that's been involved in school. And we want to get our data together and be able to respond effectively and make sure that the kids who need extra help and support are getting it.
When, when is the STAR being administered at the municipal?
It's a great question. Let me see if I have that information here. You know, I don't have that off the top of my head.
But I guess the, the big question, the hope would be we, we do it relatively quickly. So you could make tweaks this year as opposed to.
Right, right. Yeah. I, I think, I mean, generally, we try not to do it right at the very start of school because we need to give kids a little time to settle in. And, and now is about probably when we'd be rolling it anyway. I think the one idea, I know the middle school teacher, middle school is still looking to hire a reading specialist to do some like very dedicated intervention groups around literacy. We've had some conversation about trying to find a way to do a parallel for math too. So.
But yes, Tony, I mean, these, the assessments we're talking about are formative assessments to figure out where we are. So it can inform what we do. Like right now, it's, it's not like an MCAS, which is sort of an after the fact, how did it go kind of assessment.
Yeah. The cool thing about STAR too is you can just, they're quick. It's a quick online thing and it, you can kind of keep going back and checking in. So it's not like I, you just do it once and then sort of figure it out from there. You can do it, try something, do it again. So it's a very, very useful tool.
I'd encourage us to communicate, you know, transparently. Look, there's some areas, I mean broadly, I don't expect everything to be perfect, but, but, you know, it's, you know, being transparent saying, look, you know, we've done these assessments, you know, there are some gaps, there's some areas where we're doing as well, we think. Just because I think a lot of people just are very worried. So.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, that makes a lot of sense. Wait, I have a text from. Oh, yeah. Matt says ELA is almost done and math is in process, but.
Yeah. So, so we have a, STAR has a testing window. So we set the window, we're trying to get the first round of testing done by the break. That's our goal is by the 25th. And we gave teachers the flexibility to administer at a time when it felt like it was best and would it impact the unit or anything that they were on? And it's really meant to be, my personal opinion is it's best once we get three data points. So, because with three data points, we'll get a trend line for each student. And then we can have discussions with students about the trend line and whether or not from that point on, the next result shows a positive increase, a negative increase, a decrease rather. And then where's their goal? Because it'll set a goal for each student. So that way we could really focus on growth rather than are they on grade level or not? Because we want to make sure that kids are still growing, even if they're on grade level. So, and it has a pretty good way of predicting how we think students will fare on the MCAS. That was a research that the STAR company did with MCAS to see how it would fare, to let us know if they were prepping. So we have some questions out to them that we're just trying to understand before we really release the data. But in my experience, I used STAR when I was in Vermont for many years. And it's just really like a, a check-in, like how, it's really meant to like guide our instructional groups, group kids together. And in the first round, we may, we may get some data that's a little all over the place, which is why I'm hoping to get three. And so, you know, that's kind of the plan for right now.
Thank you.
Alison. So speaking of data, the last thing I didn't list it as a bullet here for the superintendent's report, but I just want to mention that we are planning to, we're planning to release a survey next week to parents, and I'm hoping also to students. Because we really think we're at a moment in the year where we are very much interested in getting some feedback and some input from people about a number of things. You know, how the, the model is going and how people are feeling in terms of health and safety. And also to get some sense of how people are feeling about another, a number of possible decisions. So I just want to mention that that is on the horizon. And I certainly won't engage the school committee in that process. So, yes, I'll leave it there for now. I think we may get more into that when we're talking about our discussion items later on.
Okay. Thank you. So that concludes the superintendent's report, right?
Yes.
And we will move on to the updates, liaison reports. And we'll start with Mia. Here what's going on with the building project right now.
Yep. So, so we're moving forward. We had, we're, we're in schematic design and we will be here for, until we have the vote in the spring, the town vote. We presented, I can't remember when our last meeting was, this group. So we presented. The current design to the, to the town and a community forum last month. And we got some really great feedback. You know, some of it was good, some of it was not good. And that's the kind of stuff we need to hear. And I think our architects took away about 10 or 12 sort of talking points that came out of that feedback. Went, looked at the design and made significant changes based on that feedback. So at our last SBC meeting last Friday, they presented an updated design showing how they addressed that feedback. I think the, the SBC members seemed very happy with the revisions. I encourage people at home to go pull up the video from that meeting. It's on the elementary school building website and, you know, watch, watch the, especially the piece about the revised design. I think it starts at about the 28 minute mark and you'll see sort of the changes that were made and what the current design looks like. And they actually also include some sort of more realistic renderings. So you can see from different angles what the school would, would look like. So I thought that was really helpful. It was a great presentation. I definitely encourage people to go check it out. In terms of schedule, our next SBC meeting is December 11th. And at that meeting, we will be getting cost estimates from the architect for this schematic design phase. And they will present those to us. And, you know, we'll, we'll look at what the cost will be. And then we will follow that up with a community forum on December 15th. Again, presentation to the community to get feedback and, and to understand what's happening with the project. And then the, the SBC will meet again a week later on the 18th to vote whether or not to move the, to submit this design and the schematic design to the MSBA. So things are moving fairly quickly. I should note that even if we submit the schematic design to the MSBA in late December, early January, we still have another significant portion of time for designing. So this isn't, you know, what you see is what you get. This is really just, this is where we think we're going. This is the direction we're going in. And this is sort of, you know, at this point, what we think this will look like. We're not, it's not going to change dramatically, but certainly we have a lot to, a lot to discuss and a lot to come. So that's where we are.
Great. Thanks, Mia.
Thank you.
Tony, would you like to provide an update on the COVID-19 advisory group? Do you like to unmute first?
Would be good. I think this will kind of drive into, I'll be, keep it relatively short because I think the, this will set up and frame a bit of the discussion items that we're going into in a few minutes. We had a recent meeting, I would say there were kind of two topics of conversation. One was just an acknowledgement, I think of our medical experts, epidemiologists, that unfortunately, as you've seen the news, the trend has not been good in the country, the Commonwealth or Westwood. You know, the case, the cases, well, any metric you take, number of cases, hospitalizations, positivity, that trended well. And there was, and they continue not to trend well since we met about a week ago. Westwood unfortunately is in the same case. I think our cases have gone up about four times since the summer. So that was kind of one acknowledgement. That being said, I think the second topic that we focus most of the time on was testing. And we'll talk a little bit about that, I think, in the discussion item. But just as a kind of preface, I think when we got the input of the four or five experts at the committee, they all, you know, were supportive of kind of a phased approach to testing. I think they thought the idea of testing, maybe potentially starting testing with staff made a lot of sense for a number of reasons, both to protect the safety of the staff as well as actually the, the family of the staff. You know, I think that was, I thought they thought, great first step. We'll talk about that in a minute. So I think there was broad consensus on that. So that's kind of it. We're going to probably meet again soon after this meeting, hopefully before Thanksgiving. The other piece, and I think I do want to bring up with them. And this is more positive, I missed her positivity. You've probably seen in the press. Hopefully we'll know in the next month or so, or a few weeks about kind of final results on some of these vaccines. The initial data from Pfizer was very positive. And another company with similar technology should be announcing things in the next few weeks. So we'll want to get that group's input on that, just to kind of be, you know, things have been looking that great on the caseload. But I think there's some hopeful good news. Keep our fingers crossed. So we'll want to get their input on that and how to think about that as well. So that's where we're kind of headed. But we'll talk more about that. I think that this, all this in the discussion items.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Before we move to discussion items, are there any other liaison reports that anyone would like?
I have a quick update, if you don't mind, Carol.
I don't mind.
The council on aging.
Yes.
Obviously the seniors in our community are super isolated. They're, you know, inherently high risk. So most of them are kind of staying put. So that's tricky coming into the holidays. So the council on aging is, would love it if any students would like to make cards that could be shared with seniors. And then they're also doing a gift drive where community members could donate gifts that are given to isolated seniors so that they have a gift at the holidays. So they're hoping that we could set up donation boxes at the different schools. And I'm happy to kind of be the point person to lead that if the committee and the principals and everybody thinks it's appropriate.
So if, if that's for community members, aside from folks who, aside from parents of students, will there be other places to make donations aside from at the particular schools? Or can they just do, will they be able to do, do donations online? Or is it, you really have to go to a drop, Dropbox at a school?
My impression, and I can get additional info from Lena, but my impression is they're looking, you know, for items to be left in a Dropbox. They're looking for the actual gifts as opposed to monetary donations. Happy instead, I doubt they refuse monetary donations, but I can get some additional details.
Okay. Yeah, it just might be a little tricky with the, the way the security in the school works now.
Right.
So we just need to work through that. But I think it's a great idea. And especially I like the idea of students making cards for the, the kids, I mean, for the kids, for the seniors. I think that would be, that would be really special.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. All right. Moving on to discussion items. Okay. So let's start with the. About the Dussie memorandum from last week. Emily, do you want to start us off on this? And you're on mute. Emily, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. When will I learn? Um, so, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how you want to proceed with this conversation, but I, I'll just try to frame it up a little bit here. So, you know, at our last meeting, we talked about putting together criteria for transitioning between models. And we talked about trying to propose a timeline for, you know, for looking at those benchmarks. And hopefully, you know, I think the committee felt that it would be helpful to have some targets that we were looking at in terms of dates.
that we were looking at in terms of dates. So I, I went ahead and I, I, I did that. I drafted up, a proposal and I sent it to you last week to review and, in preparation for, um, the discussion tonight, and then a few things have unfolded, um, at the, at the state level since then. And so I, I, from my perspective, it just would be helpful to kind of loop back and remember, um, how we got here. So, um, you know, I think that Massachusetts took a particular approach to school reopening that was different than in some other states, right? So for example, um, you know, in Rhode Island, the state provided all districts the reopening plan, right? They set up, um, testing centers specifically for students and school staff. They set up a contact tracing program that was centralized at the state specifically for schools, right? They, they just had a different centralized approach to that, that process, and, um, that is not the approach that Massachusetts took. So Massachusetts, as you know, instructed each district to create its own reopening plan. And, um, you know, doing so also required that each district locally collectively bargain. And so both of those processes of trying to create a plan to submit to the state and, um, collectively bargain took place over several weeks in the summer. And, um, it was a challenging process for a lot of reasons, and, um, one of, one of those was that the state issued some initial guidance at the end of June, but then they continued to issue their guidance in, um, you know, sort of in dribs and drabs every few days. You go on their website, you can see all their guidance documents. They start at the end of June and they just keep going up until the end of August. So, we are building things in flight. Um, in Westwood though, we, you know, we conducted multiple surveys with families. We had, had held multiple forums about the reopening plan to answer people's questions and get input. And we are required to submit this plan to DUCI by the deadline, and we met that deadline. Um, and we ratified an MOA with our, um, with our bargaining units, and we submitted our plan, as all districts did, to DUCI, and it was approved. So that was, that was our process, you know, and I, I think a lot of people did a lot of work to get students back safely for in-person learning in that hybrid model. We prepared our buildings and we hired staff to support that hybrid model. And, um, and also to support the requirement that we also offer a fully remote option to any family who opted for that. And so we were building that model and making staffing decisions without, um, knowing how many people ultimately would, would choose that. So, um, so that, you know, that was sort of the process that got us to this place. So as I said, that I drafted a proposal for the, um, the school committee to, to look at, but, after sending that to you, I think on Friday morning, on Friday afternoon, the governor held a press conference, um, with the commissioner of education and the secretary of education, where they clearly expressed that it's their priority to have all students in school full-time as long as safety measures allow it and as long as it is feasible. So, you know, I want to say that I think we all want kids to return to school in person. I mean, I do not need to be convinced that that would be, in everyone's best interest and wonderful. That is clearly the goal. Um, that is our, our goal.
Right, and I think, just to jump in on that, I, I, I think there isn't a school committee member here, anyone in the administration who disagrees with that, and I think it's important that you're making that point because, I'm sorry to interrupt, but because we're getting so many cards and letters from folks saying, bring everybody back, bring everybody back, why aren't you? And there are a lot of things to consider, but I will let you continue.
Yeah.
I think that's a, was a great point to make.
Yeah, no, and, and that's exactly it, right? So the, the context and the circumstances of, um, you know, the current operations and safety measures and feasibility vary from school to school and district to district, right? So, you know, among those variables, for example, is the percentage of students who opt for fully remote. So in Westwood, we are currently at about nine percent of our students fully remote, whereas other area districts are as high as twenty percent or more. It's just a difference from community to community. And you know, it, um, if you have twenty percent of your students fully remote, then it might make it more possible for all students who want to return in person to return in person. Right? When you sort of do that, right? So it's, it's just a variable, and that variable differs from community to community. You know, additionally, as a community in Westwood, we committed to six feet of distance between students. And that decision aligns with CDC guidelines. And, you know, it minimizes the number of students who need to quarantine when a positive case occurs. Um, and so that, that is where we landed in Westwood. Different districts have different class sizes and different sized classrooms, even in our own district, the sizes of classes and the sizes of classrooms vary from building to building. So these are just variables that all have to get factored into things when, um, when people use this phrase, if feasible, there are a lot of things to consider about what's feasible. So, you know, my sense is, is that there's considerable consternation at the state level with districts who haven't yet returned students to any in-person learning. Right? So for example, there are, there are districts that are, that started the year fully remote, and they are still currently fully remote, or there are districts where, um, their secondary students are still fully remote. Clearly, that isn't our situation, right? We, we tried to get people back in. Um, and we also prioritized instruction, in-person instruction for our youngest learners and our high need students. I think another concern that we have really been feeling coming from DUCI has been, with districts who have, in their hybrid model, relied to a great degree on asynchronous learning. That also was not our approach in Westwood. We prioritized, you know, synchronous instruction and making sure that kids had access to that kind of instruction every day in school. So, so I would just say that, you know, while we are optimistic that we aren't seeing evidence of transmission in our schools with the measures that we currently have in place, and I, I think that's great. Clearly, that is what, you know, we hoped for. We are managing daily issues related to COVID, like contact tracing or students or staff having to quarantine, that we are finding that that is our sort of everyday reality here. And I think that is going to be an ongoing issue. I think that's just where we are. And we very much want to keep our schools operating and keep kids here in person and have that be a consistent experience. We don't want to get into any kind of like opening, closing kind of pattern. And we're also mindful as, that is, the weather changes, you know, we may have to adjust some of those safety measures that we've had in place in the fall. So, you know, thus far, we've really been taking kids outside to eat. And we've been able to be very faithful about making sure that when indoors, kids have masks and, you know, that isn't going to be possible nearly to the extent that it is now as the weather gets colder. You know, our ventilation strategy to get fresh air into the rooms has to do with keeping windows open, not entirely, but one piece of that strategy is that our, our windows are open in our classrooms and I don't know that we can keep doing that in January. So I say it only to say that we are optimistic and also realistic that some of these variables that we've had in place this fall are about to change.
Right. Well, and just, can I just add something to that too? I mean, again, I'm back to people who are really pushing, um, for us to come back full-time and are trying to compare us to other districts and many other districts we've looked at and, um, that they, that they've mentioned, we have looked at and, and they are, it's really apples to oranges, and maybe you can get into a little bit about that after, but all of these things that we have to take into consideration, one of the major, um, points too, is that when we create these metrics and when, if and when we can come back full-time, that also involves working with the WTA. And we really would have to go back and revisit, uh, the memorandum of agreement here. So that's also part of the process. And so again, it's, um, I guess I'm really saying that not to you, because you know this, but to anyone who's out there listening is that it's, um, it's, it's not an easy transition. It's not a flip of the switch, and it's about the safety of not just our kids, but our teachers and their families. And we want to make sure, uh, and, and we'll have to come to an agreement again, and I, maybe I'm jumping ahead of, of, um, of what you wanted to say, but, um, in terms of the metrics that you provided to us already, they're, they're moot at this point because the state has now taken, gone a different route. So we now have to come up with new metrics, correct? And we will have to work, well, I'll let you jump in on that.
Well, so I think this is what we need to talk about tonight. So, I mean, I, I put together a draft where I had some criteria. The, the problem is, is that the, the criteria that we've been talking about, you know, was relied heavily on DUCI's and DPH is what they call their stoplight metrics.
Right.
And, um, so that's, you know, the weekly report that comes out with the color-coded system and, you know, they rolled those metrics out sometime in the summer. I don't recall when, but they, they rolled those out and we've been tracking them every week, and those are the metrics that districts were directed to use in terms of thinking about which model to be in, right? The colors kind of had a corresponding expectation for, um, for model. And so when I started drafting things, I was using that, metric. And then in the governor's press conference last Friday, and I, you know, I would note with no prior warning to superintendents, the state announced that the metrics were changing and, you know, for reasons that they talked about at length. And so, you know, actually during the press conferences, I was watching the press conference, I got a memo from DUCI, that had their sort of new updated expectations. And so, you know, in addition to adjusting the metrics, which basically has, I mean, they downgrade the color-coded, the color designation, I guess, is, um, what happened. So, you know, whereas under the old metrics, we, the state had had, I think, a hundred and twenty-one communities that were designated red. Under the new metrics, it's, I think, sixteen, right? So it, it just sort of changed the metrics. And so they changed the metrics, but also, in addition to that, they're not really articulating, they're, they're not showing a connection between the color designation and the learning model. That isn't really part of the system anymore.
What do you mean? What, what do you mean?
Well, what I mean is that it, it says that, that in-person learning is the, the goal regardless of the color designation.
Right, okay.
Right? So, um, you know, they have said that communities that are gray, green, and yellow are expected to be fully in person if feasible is, you know, is the wording, if, if, you know, if feasible. And that if feasible phrase is, you know, pretty, the short phrase, but it's, there's, there's a lot packed in there. And I know that the, you know, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has released a statement in response to that, and has had some things to say about, here are the things that districts really need from the governor in order to, to, to make that happen. Um, but, you know, moving past that for a second, in, so in my draft to you, I think there are a couple of issues. One is that the criteria that I outlined are now not the criteria because the criteria changed.
Right.
And, um, so that's, that's the first thing. But I will point out that in that draft, I had been targeting looking at the criteria, as I outlined it, in mid-December with the idea that we would be making a decision for the start of second semester, which this year is February first. And the reason that I was suggesting that timeline, there are a couple of reasons. So one is that the change of semester is when we told families that they could switch models. So there could be a lot of changing around anyway at that point. You know, we could have remote kids coming back. We could also have people going remote. I, I can tell you that just in the last week at the middle school, Mr. Redmond has had ten students decide that they want to be fully remote now. Right? So we have sort of this fluid situation, but I, I thought that at the semester point, when we know there is a choice point to be made, that that would be good. The change in semester is also the time when the master schedule changes at the secondary level. And there are a whole lot of logistics associated with that transition anyway, and so it felt reasonable to kind of roll them in. And then, you know, I kind of was putting out that timeline because the bottom line is, it's gonna, it would take a great deal of preparation and logistics to make that change, and we would need ample lead time. I mean, I, I think about everything that went into getting, launching things in the hybrid model and, um, is this not as simple as flipping a switch and saying, everybody come back? I mean, there's just a lot, a lot that would go into it. So we would need some, some lead time. And as you mentioned, Carol, um, you know, if we thought that we wanted to make a change and we had a target date, then we would have to reopen bargaining. And, you know, I do want to be clear about that, that we committed to six feet and, um, in order to bring back all nearly three thousand kids fully in person, we can't, I mean, we can't do it at, at six feet. So,
We don't have the space.
No, we don't have the space. The DUCI guidance speaks to, the, their guidance says that school districts should aspire, is the word they use, aspire for six feet of physical distance between students. And I can tell you that it's not about aspiring, right? Like, we can aspire all we want, but we cannot get six feet of physical distance with all of our kids back. And so DUCI says that, um, you know, you should aspire for six feet, but at a minimum have three feet. And if not, if a kid doesn't have a mask on, that you have to expand to six feet. So for things like snacks, lunches, right? You have to figure out a way to do that. So, um, yeah, so we would have to reopen that issue in order to do it. So I, I had sort of put out some of those things, and then you'll see that one of the criteria that I spelled out was also our ability to provide testing. So I thought that that's something that we might want to talk about, um, also. So anyway, I will stop talking now and see if what you people want to talk about.
There's a lot, there's a lot to discuss here. So, so let's jump on this, and then I think, um, then we, I mean, testing is not really a, it's, it's all part of this as well. Um, so, uh,
Can I ask a quick question?
Go.
If we, um, do go back full-time in person, will fully remote still be an option for students?
Yes, I mean, I believe, I believe it would have to be. And, I mean, I, I haven't heard anything from DUCI that that would not be the case.
So if we're fully remote and, I mean, sorry, fully in person, and there's a close contact situation, and let's say a class has to quarantine or ten kids or whatever the number is, for those two weeks, if we're all in person, what do those kids do?
Well, I don't know the answer to that question. We would have to, you know, we'd have to think that through. We'd have to, we'd have to figure that out. So, that isn't where I thought you were going with that question. I thought you were, interestingly, I, I thought what you were going to ask is, would more people be designated close contacts? And of course, the answer to that is yes, right? Because the, the close contact definition has to do with six feet.
Right.
So that's an interesting question, man. I have to say, I have not really given that a great deal of thought, so we would have to think that through. In other words, even if we were fully in person, would we somehow also have to be managing technology in order to?
Right, because right now with K through three, the way it's working is if, um, a kid has to quarantine, it's considered an absence, right? Like,
Yeah.
there, there's a, like, they're home with the flu, and maybe they'll have work sent home, but there's, there's no zooming in like you would with the rest of, in the hybrid model.
Correct. That is what we've said for K to three. And I, I just think that realistically, I mean, planning for an in-person room is a different process.
Right.
than being to be, you know, and, you know, so.
Right.
That's just.
No, I think it's just, it's, it's a wrinkle, I think. With the younger kids, I think we're not seeing as much. So it's not, I don't think it quite affects, right? We're not seeing as.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's certainly the case. We're not, we're not seeing nearly as much, um, with younger.
Right. I mean, with, I'm just thinking with eight kids, you know, in, in a week, that's a lot of kids who would be out.
Yeah.
So that.
Well, I mean, so that's just a problem we would have to work through, right?
Right.
That's just part of the process. We'd have to figure that out. Sure, we could figure it out in, in some way. But I, I, I think that actually in some ways, it speaks to sort of this larger issue that we've been talking about for a while, which is that, you know, we very much want to keep open and keep kids coming in person. And that, um, all of those issues of quarantining and whatnot sort of go to like our ability to keep the operation going.
Right.
Well, yeah, and it begs the question, if we brought everybody back, I mean, we'd have to bring them back at, at three feet. I, I mean, I don't even know if that's, I guess, three feet would be, would be the norm. We'd have to bring them back at three feet. And the, um, I don't know how we get there. I mean, right now too, we have an advisory committee, right? And then medical advisory team who's saying six feet is where it's at. We need it to be six feet, and that's why it's working. And that's why we don't have spread in the schools. That's why, uh, you know, all of the, it seems, the cases that, for sure, the cases that we've had of COVID have been the result of contact outside of school. So I, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out how we would do this and, uh, ensure the safety of our staff and our, and their families and of the kids, which maybe, maybe this is the way to parlay into the whole testing, um, point.
First of all, I apologize for being missing in action for, before. I still haven't figured out how to work my computer, so I apologize for that. I was there waving, but no one could see me. And I, first of all, it's a very difficult time for all of us. And Emily and your staff have done an incredible job holding things together. And thank you. And I think our contact tracing team, the work that they've been doing, Karen, Matt and Paul, and Tony, your committee getting together. So a lot of people need to be thanked for keeping us above water. Uh, I've attended 10 hours of meetings representing the committee with this Wellesley collaborative, which I've been very impressed with their thinking, which is no different from us. All of them want to do, uh, it's about 10 different cities and towns, as rich as Newton and Brookline, and we got Revere and other, uh, all struggling to try to, uh, keep the kids in school and get them back. And then I'm looking at the, uh, the regular flu season starting and all of the things in the future. And they've learned a lot and they share everything they've done, everything they've done. They've shared with me, I've sent it on to Emily, surveys they've done. So I think it's a wonderful organization, uh, and the expertise they have is, uh, I think, state of the art. The infectious disease principals, the, uh, the people at the Harvard MIT Broad Center, uh, and every meeting has had school committee members, superintendents, uh, public health people, in addition to all of these other people. The talent has, I think, done the most, because they started earliest, they did their survey of parents in August, uh, is Wellesley. Uh, and they've learned a lot. They've changed their approach, uh, and they've learned a lot in the process. What Tony's committee has suggested is that we have teachers tested right away as soon as possible. Everybody agrees with that. And Wellesley has led the way in allowing us all to be able to have our teachers tested free. That's the Ginkgo people. I've sent people the comments that, that I've called them, I've got the phone numbers, and they're willing to do the first group of teachers and staff tested free, which a big issue before us always has been cost. Well, teachers free to get started isn't a bad deal. So far, the Wellesley teachers have been tested four times.
Charlie, can I, Charlie, can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, I'm inter, so you said it's only one time that they got it free, right? Not four times?
One time is free. And then the teachers are getting tested the same way the kids are being tested, with saliva-based tests, uh, uh, in pool testing. So, uh, so the, the point, I've just met a school teacher from Wellesley, second grad. She's been tested four times. So what does that do? Well, uh, if, if you have a COVID, particularly the asymptomatics, who are out there infecting other people not knowing they're doing it. They don't have any idea that they're infected. But their teachers and students, 40% of those with the disease are asymptomatic. That's the real danger. And the value of the testing is you find them and you have them sit out for a little bit of time so they're not infecting other people. But what all of these groups have figured out is if you don't find the asymptomatic students and teachers, you, you're not going to be able to ever, hopefully, make sure everybody's been found. So what they have done, Wellesley's cost, a, a problem that we have had is the cost of doing it. Wellesley, the first time they did this, the student testing, which they did with swabs and they were in tents and all of that, $85 a student. The second time they did it, it's $15 a student. The students take home a vial, they, they put saliva into it, they bring it in, they're all sent off overnight and they do pool testing. And the next day you find out everybody is fine. If there isn't, they trace it down to who is the person that's positive. And they have all these, uh, various methods of notifying the appropriate people. So that's what I think today is the state of the art. Now, what's the value of doing that? Well, right now, we have 20 teachers and students who are positive. We're now tracing who they may have been attached with, who gave it to them. But we still don't know, was it an asymptomatic teacher, asymptomatic student? It infected them. That's why you need to do the testing. And if it's $15 a, 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 a test, they're willing to show us how they did it, share everything with us. So my, the bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, is, uh, we're not going to be, we're going to have these same problems in November and December. If we start testing these, we find the asymptomatic, you don't test once, you got to test multiple times because the first time you might have somebody who's negative. Three days later, they're positive. So you keep up the testing for a period of time. The other thing that the other towns are doing, I think that's innovative. They've offered the municipal employees to be a part of the testing program. If they, they, they put saliva into vials, they go off. So there's a lot of things schools could do for the town, as well as for the teachers and the students. So I'd be, I've sent everybody a summary of what I have learned. I've set a summary of what I think I would like to see us vote on tonight to give Emily some direction and some support. And what I'd like to do is support Emily to contact the parents, educate the parents, the possibility of the things that Maya's done, these tremendous Zoom calls, where people have offered their comments on the school building project, a Zoom educational program for parents, where we have some public health experts answering their questions would be valuable at this time. I think to, to begin to take advantage of the free testing initially of the teachers, we should go for. And at least we should look at this Merimus, which is a company that Wellesley has contracted with for their second level of testing for $15. Wellesley's very happy with it. They've done the teachers four times, they've done the kids a lot. I think we should seriously look into that as an option, uh, and maybe see if the town might be interested in working with us.
Okay.
I would like to see the committee vote tonight to proceed, to encourage Emily to look into these things. So eventually we can have everybody being tested. So we have nobody left in the school system. Come the end of November and early December, we found everybody that's asymptomatic. We've got them out, uh, they're, they're taking off a couple of weeks. Uh, and we then maybe by December, safely get most kids coming back and most teachers coming back. So I'm going to get up and answer any questions you might have.
All right, um, Tony, um, I know you've been a part of this as well, Charlie. I appreciate all the information you've provided. I think, um, Tony, I'm going to let you jump in, but I, I, I know that I personally am looking for some more specifics as to how we would do this and cost and so forth. But before we get to that, I know you've been partnered with Charlie on this. Do you want, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, so, I mean, I just kind of want to bring it back a little bit, um, so a few things. I mean, interest, I mean, interestingly, Wellesley just announced today that they're shutting the high school till, um, December, um, 1st. So, you know, I just, I just want to mention that. But I think, let's, I want to bring it back. I think all that we've said here, I don't, look, I, as I've always said, I've said to many people, like, if we were the NFL and we could test everyone every day, I would love to. But that's, we're not the NFL, we're not a building down industry. I'd go back to what I think was a reasonable conversation we had with some of our advisory group, which was like, I, I don't disagree, I'd love to do a lot more testing. But let's start with, if we can, you know, we, we don't need to talk about numbers tonight. I think we could probably make it polite, but can we start with the staff for both? A number of reasons, their safety, the safety of their families, um, you know, is, is kind of a starting point. And other towns have done this. And whether or not it's through, you know, one of the vendors you mentioned, Charlie, or another vendor, we can figure that out. It will take a little time, it, you know, but I think the idea would be, you know, at least by, hopefully, the return by, you know, from the winter break, we could implement that. So I think that was kind of one thing that I think the advisory group, I would love to bring Charlie to your point. I think some of these other ideas would be great. And I'd love to maybe, uh, before our next advisory meeting, maybe next week, bring some of the other points to them to get their input. But that at least where I think the advisory group, um, came out, I think it, in my view, it makes a lot of sense. I think a lot of the other things, um, I think we need to start somewhere. And I think we've talked about this a lot as committee over the last two months, and I think this is a good start. So that's, I guess, my overall view. And I think the other piece to the metrics, you know, kind of the, that, you know, Emily talked about was, you know, I think, you know, there's the metrics and the, we can, we can look at the metrics. There's all sorts of metrics. Unfortunately, like I said earlier, they've gone, not going well in the state or the Westwood. But I'd also like to add kind of the idea of thinking about, again, I'm, I'm the optimist. If we do get a, you know, vaccine that, you know, could start being dosed in the first quarter of, um, next year, we should also consider that. But I think there's a starting point, I guess. You know, I think we've talked a lot of, at least my view, just as one person on the committee, we've talked a lot about this. I think there's a lot of different views. I think the advisory group had a point of view that was reasonable. And I'd love to start there and get that started. And then we can talk again in December on the next episode.
Okay, so could, so would you be able to, so, all right, there's a lot of information here. And I know we morphed from the metrics into the testing, but I think they definitely tie together. Would you be able to provide us at this point with specifics? Just how that, how a program for the teachers would work? And do we have anyone right now that we know of that would do it for us? What the cost would be, how often we would test the teachers? I know Charlie talked about the first time testing, um, as, as being free. But do we have information as to, okay, where do we go from there? If we have that company come in once, I, I don't know. I, I just want to see a framework.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to leap in on what the process would be. So, um, you know, so Charlie has, has, has provided some, you know, a, a, a good direction for, um, I know of two different places that I think that we could get like a one-time test done for free. And, and I can pursue that.
Okay.
Um, I will also say that the state is about to start a pilot for their phase one pilot for the, um, Abbott. Now, I cannot remember all the technical terms, but it's, it's a rapid test, right? One of those rapid tests. And, um, they asked for districts that would be interested in participating in the phase one pilot. And I indicated that we were interested. Now, that testing would be for potentially students and staff. And I want to be clear that those tests are really only useful if people are symptomatic. So it's just a way to get access to free, quick tests so that people don't have to be out of work or school while they're waiting for their test result, if in fact their symptom is not COVID, right? So that would be helpful to us operationally because right now we have people who end up just like being out because they're just waiting for their test result, right? Okay, so I've indicated that we're interested in that. Those tests are not useful for people who are asymptomatic. So this is not what Charlie was talking about. And certainly the volume of the testing, you know, wouldn't take care of that. So in terms of how would we move forward, we would have to, I mean, we would have to put out an RFP and go through a public procurement process. And so we would, we would, in the RFP, outline what we're looking for and sort of, you know, what our criteria is, what deliverable we're looking for and different parameters. And then we would put it out and companies would bid. And we would define the criteria, you know, in that process, you define the criteria by which you're going to evaluate the bids. And, um, you know, we would go through all of those specific steps. So if that is something that we are interested in pursuing on the kind of timeline that Tony's talking about, then I would suggest that, you know, it'd be great if the committee then would direct us to like, start that process because, you know, it takes a little time.
I would like to recommend, Emily, that you do start the process, at least to do the research on it. I'd say a criterion should be that it is a saliva-based test at $15 with a 24-hour turnaround as a, a, a subject in the RFP. On, we're looking for people who can do that. The other issue I think that we need to consider is if we do all testing of teachers, that's wonderful to find who are asymptomatic teachers. But the teachers are still at risk of asymptomatic kids. The teachers are in there, so unless you test both groups, the, the, the disease can spread from asymptomatic kids to each other and to teachers. That's why you test them both together. But I would suggest, Emily, at least the research to find out companies that can do this in that price range with that kind of turnaround and to have it as an option for us to move quickly, if we want to move quickly and test both groups together.
I have a question.
What's that?
Go ahead, Amanda, and then Mia.
Okay, just related to, um, Charlie, the comment he just made about the, um, $15 saliva testing and the information he sent out. Thank you, by the way, Charlie, for doing all that work. I know you spent a lot of time on it. My understanding is that's pool testing. And I'm wondering for staff, if we wouldn't want to do PCR testing? Because that seems like it would, it'd be quicker in terms of getting specific results as opposed to just finding out like one of 10 or 20 staff has COVID.
What they do, Amanda, is they, if they have a positive in the pool, they can narrow it down within 24 hours to the person. And then they notify the public health officials, the family and all of that. So it's, they narrow the, the, anyone in the pool, it's just the pool allows it to be done for $15. So that's, and usually right now, the pool is being done for teachers and kids also. And they just narrow down, an infected person in the pool gets, they find out who it is right away and notify people.
So, so how would that, so you, you'd get the pool results in 24 hours, right?
If, if the pool is all negative, they say that pool is all negative. If somebody in the pool is positive, they then can, they still have enough saliva to narrow it down to who in the pool is the positive one.
So how long does that take? Is it 48 hours or 24 hours?
I think it's within 24 hours.
For both, okay.
Mia?
There may be not a lot of companies doing it, but they, some companies are doing it at that level of sophistication.
Um, so I just, I, I have a couple thoughts. I think, well, again, Charlie, thank you, and Tony too, thank you for, for really looking into this. I think there's clearly, clearly a benefit to testing, right? The first is, as Tony mentioned, the safety of our staff and our students, and which has always from day one been paramount for us, right? And, and it's the staff and their families and the students and their families. So I think clearly testing leads to that. I think also, and this is important, is that testing is a path back to being in school, fully in school, right? That we can, we can leverage testing to get to the place where we get everybody back in school. But it has to be about having the right data, right? To see what the impact is of having people back. And so my concern is that I, I, I feel like we need more concrete proposals here. Like, I think that I am 100% in favor of testing if we can do it, if we have the budget and, and we have the programming in place. But it's, I, I feel like I just need more information, right? I mean, I, if we're going to test teachers, I need to understand what the program is. How many teachers are going to opt in? If we only have 40% teachers opting in, I'm not sure how effective that would be. So that would be sort of stage one, right? It's testing the teachers. How much will it cost? Will we get it free the first time? And if we're doing it weekly, will we pay for it every single time after that? If we are, how much is that? So that's the first phase of, of, of the teacher testing. If we're moving on to student testing, again, the same questions. Who's performing the testing? How, how much participation do we have from the student body? How much is it going to cost? And I, I think we can all sit here and say we're in favor of testing because we're in favor of safety in the schools and we're in favor of trying to get the kids back to schools. But I just feel like at this time, I don't have enough information to, Charlie, as you say, take a vote. Like, I don't know what we're voting on. I think that we've already empowered Charlie and Tony to move forward with this and to investigate it. So I'm just not sure what we'd be voting on today. If we had a proposal, I feel like we could vote on something.
Can we, are you comfortable going through an RFP process to, for whatever it is? Teachers to start, we can look at, we can do it for students after. Are, are you comfortable with that, us, us, the collective, us, starting that process?
Yeah, I would be. I mean, I think we have to start somewhere. And I think that, you know, that seems to me the logical next step. And then at least we'll have the information from the RFP responses to figure out, is this feasible for us?
Okay, is that Emily's that?
Yeah, I think that that, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, um, and, and I want to look back to a point that Mia made. I mean, you know, there are lots of reasons for testing, but one of them is, I mean, we're having this conversation in the context of like, what is the path forward from here? You know, I mean, we all want to get everybody back to, to school. And, um, you know, and I, I certainly have, um, you know, very much part of the narrative right now is that. you know, very much part of the narrative right now is that there isn't evidence of transmission in schools, or at least not to like, the degree that, you know, people had been concerned about. And I, I mean, that is good news, right? And, um, you know, I think that we are dealing with a lot of people who feel like that is good news and that the reason that that's the news is partly attributable to the measures that we have in place and to, and to the structures that we have in place. One of which is six feet of physical distance. And now, I don't know, right? But that is, um, part of the conversation. And so, you know, one thought I have is that if we're ever going to talk about changing the variables, then we're going to need to have some way to measure what happens as a result so that we can be assured of people's safety. And so I guess that's why, I don't know if I'm being articulate, but that's what I'm thinking about here.
Well, it's a protective measure to, to, if we're going to go three feet, for example, at some point, this would be a measure that would be in place to ensure that we could do that. And it would give, I think, folks some sense of, we are in fact looking, we are, we still have their safety as first and foremost. So I think, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, and so I, so I think that an RFP, and, you know, this is the kind of direction that I'm looking for, right? If we want to start the staff, whatever, um, you know, you tell me what you want the scope of the RFP to be, we can go with that. I think the other thing that I'm picking up on here that I'm thinking about is, um, you know, I mentioned that we're, we want to survey families, I mean, we're interested in knowing a lot of things right now. But this might be one of the things that we want to know about. So, you know, pool testing really only works if you have at least 80% of the people participating and ideally 90. That is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, but that's the statistic that I've heard.
When Wellesley did their survey in August, they had 90%, 90, over 90% of the family says, go for it right away. And they donated three quarters of a million dollars to help it. When they did the, their first testing, which people came to tents before they did the, the saliva testing, people came in tents. They had 90% of the people show up to get tested. So, uh, we may be dissimilar to Wellesley, but when parents are told that this is what we're trying to do to get your kids back and keep them there, and the best scientific advisors out there have said, this is the pathway. Uh, I'd be shocked if we don't have 90% say, do it and get going on it.
Well, I think the big difference though is the timing, right? Like Wellesley did it before school started, so the parents really had incentive.
You're absolutely right.
And right now, they have something to lose, you know, an asymptomatic child could be sidelined from learning for two weeks. And I'm not saying that that's right or wrong, but I don't think that we can bet on 90% participation.
The, the, the perfect should not be the enemy of the better, okay? It would have been better if we had started before they came back. However, delaying it even further now isn't necessarily going to be good. Now, there's still, the, the asymptomatic kids and teachers are out there. That's the only reason we're doing it. And the 20 people in the school system, teachers and students already COVID positive, if they hadn't have been picked up someplace, they'd be back in school. Somebody, somehow they get picked up and they're now being, they're out. But the, the danger and why people are doing the testing is, you know, if we start doing the testing to the asymptomatics, then we're going to have everybody very comfortable coming back. But the time, you know, the time bombs that are out there, whoever's been found out, you got to find them.
So, so there, so two things we need to do. So we've had a lot of discussion on this, I think. Number one, we need to dis, I think the one thing we vote on tonight, if we're going to vote, is on the RFP for teachers. The other thing that I think we need to do is with that survey, Emily, that you're putting out, we need to find, we need to test the waters, or we need to find out from folks if they are interested in having their kids tested in the event that we're able to pull together a program, pay for that program, find someone to, to do it and so forth. So not guaranteeing that we're going to do it yet for the kids, but we need to know if, if, if families are interested in having their kids tested. Because again, to Mia's point, I think it was Mia, I don't remember, somebody's point, if we don't get a certain percentage, then it's not necessarily worth the money. So can we do those two steps? Can we go with the RFP? And can we ensure that there's a question in the survey that's going out shortly? And let's get the feedback.
Just modify it a little bit. One is, I, I think if we could instruct Emily to do an RFP for teachers and students, we don't ask to do the students right away, but to do the same thing at the same time, what's the cost? What's the value? But while you're doing the RFP, you might as well ask the people, because they usually do teachers and students together.
So I mean, I'm, I'm sure you could word the RFP where you're, you're separating out into different scopes.
Yeah, so, right. So, and, and I want to clarify, when we're talking about teachers, we're, we're talking about all staff, right?
Yes, sorry.
All right, no, I just wanted to clarify that. So yeah, I mean, we can certainly structure an RFP to break it out, you know, staff and students. Um, and, okay, and, and I heard the second, I'm just making sure I get the action steps here, to survey parents, one of, one of the things we want to know is to what degree people would be willing to participate.
Right.
Right, okay. Um, okay, so I can do that.
Okay, so I think, um, that we can, uh, take a vote in, in, in terms of, just for purposes of the RFP, I don't think we need to take a vote on what you put in the survey, right?
No, but could I talk about that survey for another, I mean, I think, like, we have, we have many things that we're interested in knowing in the survey, right? So that.
Right, we do. But it was just one question.
Right, but I'm, I'm thinking that I also would like to frame up some questions that, um, you know, I, I hear from many people, right? I, I get a lot of emails these days, and, um, and I, I don't know if we acknowledge that we, we received a petition from some people who, you know, are very interested in our bringing all kids back, um, you know, with all deliberate speed. And, you know, so I, I certainly, um, I, I feel like I have a keen understanding of what their position is and the, the arguments that they make in favor of this. I think, you know, I, I understand that. I have to say that I also get a lot of communication from people who are, um, who are very worried. And they're, they're worried about health and safety, and they're worried about the direction that the metrics are going in in Massachusetts. And, you know, I mentioned that we have families who are asking to go fully remote now, right? So we, we sort of have that end of the thing, you know, the spectrum. And I was having a conversation, um, with the principal today, who was relaying to me several conversations that she's had with parents recently who have communicated that they feel really good about the hybrid and feel like it's giving them the, the amount of, um, assurance in terms of level of risk that they're looking for, right? I think that it would be helpful if we could, in the survey, ask people some questions where they characterize sort of how they're feeling about health and safety under current circumstances. And, you know, some, if we were to do this, how, how comfortable would you feel with that? I think that that would be very helpful information to have from the.
Yeah, I, I think that's necessary, because I think that, you know, there are so many variables at play here that you almost need to do scenario role-playing in the survey so that people can really give a sense of what they're thinking. Um, I think you're right, we are hearing a lot from people at either end of the spectrum, but not so much to the extent that there's people in the middle. And I think that, um, you know, breaking this down into different components and, and sort of surveying it that way would be really helpful.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I had this, this realization, you know, we were working so hard on bringing back grades two and three, and I, I think we did that for good educational reasons, right? So sort of that decision-making over here. You know, I will also say that we were hearing from a lot of parents who were saying, we need to do this, we need to do this. What I think took me by surprise is that when we rolled it out, I thought as a, um, you know, piece of very good news, I didn't anticipate the responses that I was going to get from people who were very unhappy that we did that. Right, you know, who felt like they had opted into in-person based on some set of parameters and we had just like, removed those. And, um, so I, I, I guess I just say that to say that I, I want to make sure that we take the temperature and, you know, and know what we're, we're dealing with there. So, okay, so that.
That's one of the questions before we, I, I can, I've got a motion, I'm going to put it forward in a minute. Kind of latest, not so much on the testing, um, but kind of the timeline. You know, one, maybe small, but I think could be important incremental step that you could at least look at, and I don't know what your thoughts are. And I know it's difficult for the middle and high school, is the remote Wednesdays. And, you know, we already have the, and I know, you know, I know we had talked, this was probably MOU and deep cleaning, but I think a lot of the scientific, I, understanding of how COVID spread isn't so much about services. So I don't know if that's something, it's just more something to consider. It, it may be a small step, but, you know, I think it'd be an additional instruction, particularly at the elementary level.
Yeah, you know, I'm really, I'm really glad you brought that up. So I guess, um, yeah, I would, I would say this, that I think that we opened in a particular way, and then clearly we said our next priority is grades two and three, and we got to work on that, right? And we sort of did that. And so now we've done that, and of course, the next thing that we're going to do is start looking around to say, you know, what else? What is our next, um, priority? And are there other incremental changes that we think would improve the experience educationally for students that it is in fact feasible to put in place now? And how would we do that? So, um, yes, I think we will definitely do that. And I can tell you, we've had some preliminary conversations about Wednesdays, um, here in central office. You know, we, we designed that model, we, we did talk a lot about cleaning on Wednesdays. Part of what was happening when we put that in place is that we knew we were going to have to put a lot of new cleaning and disinfecting protocols in place, and we weren't sure what the capacity operationally was to do that. And we thought we might need that day, but we have a better sense of where we are now. So I think we could take a look at that. We would, you know, that still might involve some things having to do with the MOA.
But, but we'll look, yeah. I think that would make a, I mean, to go from two to three days of in-person instruction, even if it's every other week, I think that would, that's a, that's a, that's a step worth, um, logistically fighting for, if you will, so.
It's, um, I mean, I won't get into, it's a simpler proposition, it's not simple, but it's a simpler proposition at the elementary than at the secondary where it does very strange things to this, to the schedule. And, um, that's a brain teaser that I frankly have to talk to the folks at the high school about, because they get it the way that I don't, so I need to talk to them.
I would be.
Nice pause.
I was just going to add, obviously I'd be in support of looking at Wednesdays. I think that's a great idea and another step to keep the momentum going. And just circling back, Emily, to what you were saying about the timeline that you had in mind, I actually really like February 1 as some sort of target date a, as we kind of move forward and plan. Um, for all the reasons you said, but also, you know, what the next few months hold. We saw, you know, now two weeks post Halloween, we've seen a little tick in cases. And we're coming into the winter holidays and flu season. So I think it would make sense to get that behind us. And I think it would be really nice to afford teachers and their families that time, um, with hopefully some, you know, decrease stress and not have to worry about, you know, a, a big change, um, during the holidays and everything that goes with that. So I kind of like the February first.
Yeah, so you know, we've talked a lot tonight about sort of logistics and timeline. I mean, the, the draft that I had given you put out some things having to do with public health metrics too, and we haven't really, um, talked about that to a great degree. And so, and that does feel like part of the conversation. But that's more complicated anyway, but I, I think that we do have some good steps here.
Okay. Um, Tony, you said you had a motion there.
All right, let me try this. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize, um, Western Public Schools Superintendent or team to pursue an RFP process in two parts. One, to, of RP to explore COVID-19 testing for staff, broadly, you know, broadly defined. A second part of that to explore it for, uh, the student body and subject to obviously the input of the advisory board and, you know, expert views on informing that RFP.
Okay, and whoever seconds it has to say it exactly the same way. So who wants it? Who's going to take it?
I'll second, did you, is that you making the motion?
Yes, I make this motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on this RFP motion? All right, let's take a vote. Amanda Phillips.
Yes.
Tony Mullen.
Yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Charlie Donahue?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so we are unanimous, that motion carries, and, um, excellent. We are a step, a step forward on the testing issue. Okay, how about, and, uh, any? This is like a blooper on the film, never mind.
Carol, could I, one other thing that Charlie?
Yeah, please.
Interesting, um, and I, so I am conscious of the hour here, but, um, I, I think I heard Charlie say something about maybe doing some kind of, um, public forum where we brought in some public health people.
Yes.
Talk with everybody. And I, I, I heard that, and that seemed like an interesting idea to me, where people could get educated, could ask questions. You know, we could all really have some.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up, because Charlie, you, you, um, everybody else thanked you except for me, but you did, I know you did a ton of work on this, you and Tony, and that was one of your proposals. And I think that that.
And Wellesley did that, and they found that they, you know, they suddenly got a, a common feeling that, you know, these people really want to do the same thing everybody wanted to do. And they just want to do some, some things that are consistent with the public health in the process. So they're not trying to keep people from coming back, but they're trying to look at that. But I, I think the, the programs that Mia has done on the, the school building project has allowed a lot of people to, you know, express things, we've learned a lot, and I think it would be a valuable thing to have to see what, what the questions are, and have a couple of public health experts who, you know, could basically say, yeah, this is why we're trying to do it. We all want to come back, but we got to not trip over ourselves without considering all these other public health measures. So I think.
So do you have, Charlie, do you have, uh, or does anyone have, uh, the public health figures that we would bring, uh, into a forum?
There's a couple of people I talked to, uh, Emily already heard a woman, uh, she's regularly on television from, uh, the Boston University Medical Center. There's a fellow at the Road Institute. I'm sure they'd love to participate in something like this, uh, and make it available to the Westwood community. So I'd be happy to work with Emily to find the people who would be the public health experts to respond to these questions.
Do you think Dr. Fauci has any free time?
Maybe Dr. Fauci, if he gets fired, you know, we could bring him up.
Allison, will you, did you, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was just volunteering to pitch in on that. So, Charlie, if you want to connect with me on getting organized on that, I, I'd be happy to help, I think it's a great idea.
I know that we want to put the survey out sooner rather than later, but does it make sense to try and have this before we put the survey out? So that people have this knowledge when they're filling out the survey, or there's probably not enough time.
An interesting point, I don't know, being it done, um. Yeah, okay, well, you know what? Let us hop right on that and see how quickly we can make something happen.
Yeah, Charlie, are you around tomorrow? Because, uh, we could, we, we can connect tomorrow and, and get moving on it and see how quickly we can get it off the ground.
Okay, that's great. All right. Any further discussion on this COVID testing program? Or even, uh, I mean, we kind of meshed the two discussion items together. Anything else on the transitioning phases? Any other questions? No, okay, seeing none. Uh, we're going to move on to this, uh, to public participation. And this, of course, is the time when members of the community that wish to comment, um, have the opportunity to do so. Comment or ask questions on education-related issues, anything we talked about tonight and, and so forth. So at this point, um, the lines are open. Is that how they say it? That's probably old-fashioned way, to make comments or to participate, right? Who's, who's running the show on this one, Connor?
Uh, yeah, it'll be me, if that's okay.
I think that's great, thank you.
So, um, for any participants who are in the Zoom call, I need to do.
So before, I'm sorry, before you, you do this, I just want to remind folks that they must identify themselves with name and address. Um, and I'm going to ask people, um, to do their best to limit the timing of their comments to, uh, no more than three minutes, please. And, um, Connor, take it away.
Sure, um, so just as a reminder for anybody in the Zoom call, all you need to do is hit the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're on your phone, you can dial star nine in order to raise your hand, and I will be muting, uh, unmuting people as we go. So the first person going to be unmuting is Heather Morrison. Yes, we can hear you now.
This is Heather Morrison, 74, Magnolia Drive. As a parent of a third.
As a parent of third, fifth and eighth grader, a member of Bring Kids Back Westwood, a parent-driven organization that has obtained over 200 signatures in support of full-time in-person education and strongly urging the school committee to reopen all schools for full-time in-person learning. The governor, DESE Commissioner, Secretary of Education, Secretary of Health and Human Services, Massachusetts AAP, all support in-person education. They have clearly laid out a plan and the evidence and Westwood must follow the advice of these experts. We now know that classrooms are not a major source of transmission of COVID-19. The kids in schools are not spreaders of COVID. Even in high transmission areas, spread is not seen in schools. Teachers and students are safe. In countries with few restrictions on class size, distancing, mask wearing, they have seen limited transmission in schools. We also know that the negative impact of remote learning is significant. Children are experiencing significant learning loss as well as many other negative effects, including mental health problems and obesity due to inactivity. Just today, the CDC issued a study that children's mental health-related emergency room visits increased this October by 24% for five to 11-year-olds and 31% for 12 to 17-year-olds compared to 2019. We also know that the Massachusetts Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics supports a minimum of three feet distance when combined with other safety measures. They are the experts. Follow their guidance. The solution is simple. Implement three feet instead of six feet and you can bring all of the kids back. By allowing all kids back in the classroom, you make it easier for teachers to teach. They will no longer have to manage the impossible nature of teaching in-person and hybrid simultaneously. The children are suffering and we are losing valuable learning time every day that we delay. Many parents are afraid to speak up because they are afraid of retribution. They are afraid that it will seem like they don't support the teachers. I know this has been incredibly hard on educators. I am one of them. And it is exhausting work to manage a school through COVID. But it is worth every bit of exhaustion to make sure that children receive the education they need. One note on surveillance testing. It is extremely expensive and labor intensive. I am currently overseeing over 700 tests every two weeks and it is enormous undertaking and extremely expensive. While it makes people feel better, it doesn't solve the problems that you have, have identified. Most important with is molecular testing with rapid results for symptomatic individuals in close contact of positive cases. Surveillance testing does not save time on contact tracing. It only gives you more work. I am always happy to share my experience and expertise. In summary, Bring Kids Back Westwood. Our kids' futures are depending on us. Thank you.
Okay. The next person I will be unmuting is Michelle.
Hi, everyone. My name's Michelle Mccone, 50 Hawthorne Street. I just wanted to see if you could speak to the notification that we got this week from about kids' sports at the high school. So that there was a note that came out from one of my child's coaches saying that the athletic director had canceled the rest of the season. And I just wondered if you could give us some context for that, understand what was going on this week. But the season, I think, continued on another week or two and just was wondering for, looking for more information about that.
Uh, well, I'm puzzled by that. I think that athletics were scheduled at the high school this week while we were fully remote. So I'm not sure about that framing, but I can certainly look into that.
And it could, I'm sorry, it could have been a one, one team thing, but I guess I was looking for broader context. Is it all athletics? Was it just that one team? I just would look, looking for the, a bigger picture if there is one.
Yeah. I think that the season actually should have ended this week for a number of teams. I'm not, but I'm not sure on the details on that. So you know what? Let me have somebody get back to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I do not see anybody else with their hands raised. So again, if you are interested in participating in public participation, all you need to do is raise your hand. But at this time, I do not see anyone else. Oh, we just got someone coming in. I'm going to be allowing Tara to talk.
Let me unmute myself. Hi, I'm Tara Themistocles, 294 Clapboard Tree Street. My first time attending one of these meetings, but I have four kids. I have an eighth grader, a fifth grader, a third grader and a two-year-old. And I really, really hope you guys listen to Charlie. This has been extremely stressful to be at home for kids. I totally would love to keep teachers and teachers' families safe, but I really think you should listen to Heather. And some of these stats are dead on. Um, thank you. That's it.
Uh, next I would be unmuting Donna Morrison.
Hi, Donna Morrison, 303 Oak Street. I'd just like to say that I'm perfectly happy with the hybrid. There are a lot of families out there that have compromised households that I think this bring back all of Westwood to school. Families don't consider. And although I do agree with testing staff and keeping staff and their families safe so that they can keep our students in school as they are and keeping all the teachers in school as they are. We need to protect the families that are at home too. And being in a compromised home. We were glad to compromise with the hybrid model so that our student could get some social interaction with peers. Otherwise you'd be fully remote all the time. So although being in school all the time would be grand for us, that just does not work. Thank you very much.
Okay. The next person I'll be unmuting, I've had a hard time reading the name, but I believe the last name is C-Jack.
Hi, Carrie C-Jack, 98 Sycamore Drive. I'd like to thank Superintendent Parks and the School Committee for making the important decision to prioritize the return to in-person learning for grades two and three. I'm profoundly grateful that you heard the concerns of the parents and took the time to assess the situation and take appropriate steps. I know it was a difficult undertaking and I applaud you. However, as thrilled as I was to tell my third grader he was going back to school, I was equally heartbroken to tell my sixth grader that he was not. We all know the very real harms that come with keeping our children out of school. Putting aside the fact that they are falling behind academically, there is study after study showing huge increases in depression, anxiety, obesity, substance abuse and suicide amongst children and teens. The mental health impacts cannot be understated. We are coming up on almost a year of this, and I think we need to take a very serious look at what we are doing to an entire generation of children. I'm very worried as you go down this rabbit hole of testing and as you go into collective bargaining with the WTA, that you are going to lose sight of the fact that the latest guidance put out by Governor Baker and Commissioner Riley, which includes utilizing a distance of three feet, aligns with the CDC guidance, which is six feet with no masks or three feet with masks. Additionally, there is absolutely abundant data now from other states and other countries showing that schools are not major sources of transmission. Therefore, I'm asking you that you prioritize the return to school for the rest of our children. Thank you.
Okay. The next person I'll be allowing to talk is Antigone Grasso. Antigone, are you there?
Do you want to move on to the next person, Connor?
Sure. Uh, yes. Uh, next I will be allowing Tina Collins to speak.
Hi, my name is Tina Collins, 19 Bonnie Street. Um, I would just like to add that I, I agree. I'd love to see the kids back in school full-time. I have a sixth grader, a fourth grader and a kindergartner. And I love that the kindergartner can at least go four days a week. I find that super helpful because Wednesday's remote is really hard to get them to sit there and, you know, stare at a screen. Although I do think our teacher is doing a great job at trying to keep the kids involved. My main problem and, and what I hope that you guys might be looking at is with the, the sixth graders in particular, their class times are just so unbelievably long. It's really tough to have a class for 106 minutes and only go to three classes in one day. And so really they're only having science class twice a week or math class twice a week. And I think after the first, you know, maybe 40, 45 minutes, they're kind of zoning out. I don't, I don't think it's easy for them to sit there for 106 minutes, especially during a remote day. So I just don't know if anyone's planning on looking at that and trying to get them back into some sort of a schedule where they, they see each teacher every day at some point this year at least, and get back into a normal schedule like they previously had in previous years. Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to try Antigone once more.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Um, I want to reiterate and the, and support the petition, obviously that was signed by over 200 Westwood residents, not just parents, but actual community members as well. Um, and in support of the statements that both Carrie, Heather, Tara and Tina just made as well about the importance of bringing children back and the mounting evidence that it is possible to do safely. I would urge the school committee members and administration to find out how other places are doing it. And if no places in districts in Massachusetts are doing it, we need to look outside of that. There is the clear evidence that transmissions are not occurring in school and it is because they are wearing masks. It's not because of the three feet, of the six feet. It is because of the masks and the hand hygiene. I also want to caution around depending on this vaccine as the only way to bring students back. We are hoping this vaccine could be in place possibly for the 21, 22 school year. But we need to find a way now to return to in-person learning for all students. So I just want to reiterate all the AAP guidance that was issued that policymakers and school administrators should acknowledge that COVID-19 policies are intended to mitigate and not eliminate risks. And that policies to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 within schools must be balanced with the previously noted harms to children, adolescents, families and the community that come with keeping children at home. So I do want to just reiterate my support to fully bring back all students. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next person to be unmuted will be Jackie Kay.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, hi. How are you? Okay. So my question is the six-foot.
Jackie, can you just, Jackie, can you provide your address, please?
Oh, 22 Redwood Road.
Thank you.
The six-foot rule that you were talking about in the classroom in that you won't do three feet, was there a deal made with the teachers' union that the students would stay six feet apart?
That is a provision that is in our collective bargaining agreement. Yes.
So can that not be changed then?
Well, um, it has to be bargained. So that would be part of a collective bargaining agreement to change that.
Is it hopeful that that could be changed or is it non-negotiable?
I honestly think that my speculating about that probably would not be wise in terms of the collective bargaining process. So I think I'm, I'm going to decline to to talk about that. But it, it would have to be part of a discussion. And a formal.
Okay. I hope you do think about it. I have a child who is at a school where they're three feet apart and it is going well. Um, thank you for your time.
Okay. I am going to allow Donna Morrison to talk once more.
Donna Morrison, 303 Oak Street to the SBC project. I noticed when I watched the video that every classroom had a 10 by seven foot window in it. And earlier in this meeting, you were talking about students being distracted. And I couldn't help but think when I watched that video that teachers have a hard time keeping some students' attention. And here you are giving them this 70 square foot window to look out of each and every classroom, 15 classrooms. So I think that maybe there seems to be some design work maybe to be redone. And my second question on that project would be what your intentions are for disposal of any green materials that are going to be used 10, 15, 20 years down the road when they are no longer functional, compliant, cannot be disposed of when the companies that you enter into agreement that say they're going to dispose of are no longer around. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, next up will be Sandra Casteldini.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sandra Casteldini, 54 Birch Street. Hi. A couple of questions. I'm definitely in favor in bringing students back for all of the reasons that were mentioned. But we know that it's important to meet certain guidelines, certain health guidelines. And I know that those just changed over the weekend for you, Emily. So I guess one of my thoughts was that as we put those new metrics in place and can set up a timeline, I don't think we need to think narrowly at, you know, one grade or one school. When we're talking about, for instance, the middle school or the high school, because they're totally separate buildings and they don't share busing. For example, middle school and high school, you know, if you were going to bring those folks back, it could actually happen at the same time. And, you know, having a current fifth grader, he's feeling pretty sad that, you know, almost all of the rest of the elementary school has, you know, is getting ready to go back four days. So obviously looking for a sooner than later timeline there. But I just ask that you consider that, you know, it doesn't have to be, things can happen. You know, simultaneously, I know it might be taxing on the administration, but I just feel like what we can control when we meet certain measures would be great because we don't know what's going to happen even from an outside influence. So I guess, you know, what we can control will be great. And then my last point was, why not reach out to our area private schools that seem to have had a lot of success? Zavarian and St. Sebastian's, some of them doing the three feet, some of them doing the six feet. And I, I think we can learn from them. Thank you.
At this time, I do not see anybody else with their hand raised.
Okay. Thank you, everyone who participated in tonight's public participation. Moving on now to action items. The first thing I needed is us to vote on approval of the October 8, 2020 meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or discussion on these minutes? Seeing none, we will take a vote. Maya?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And I am in agreement as well. So the motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Next to approval of the October 13, 2020 meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion or changes or anything on these minutes? All right. Seeing none. Let's take a vote. Maya?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Amanda? Amanda?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion carries unanimously. We have approved those minutes. All right, let's go on to vote to accept. These are the best ones. The vote to accept a gift of seven hundred and fifty dollars for Friends of the Westwood Library Scholarship Award in honor of Carol Blumenthal.
This is a, yeah, it, this is a a new scholarship. We've been approached by the Friends of the Westwood Library. Just set this off in memory of Carol Blumenthal, and uh the criteria that they've set up for selecting the recipient would be a love of reading, a dedicated literacy, and a commitment to public service. Very nice description. And so the vote tonight is for the school committee to accept the gift, which would be given annually of seven hundred and fifty dollars for this scholarship.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, can I get a motion to accept this gift? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion other than to say thank you for this wonderful gift?
Thank you.
Okay, so let's uh take a vote. Maya?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And I am a yes, unanimous. Thank you for that gift. We accept it, and we are moving on now to new business. Anything new, different from what we've already discussed? Seeing none? I'm gonna get a uh ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Everybody jumped. All right, let's take a vote on this. Maya, you ready to go?
Yes.
Tony, how about you?
Yes.
How about you, Amanda?
Yep.
Okay, Charlie?
Yes.
I'm ready to go too, and we have nowhere to go, but just to say goodbye. Listen, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night. Be safe, be well.